Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the June 23 work session of the Penn Field Planning Board. Lori, would you call the roll?
Aiken.
Aiken, here.
Burton.
Burton, here.
Kenauer.
Kenauer, here.
Tidings.
Tidings, here.
Weisar.
Weisar, here.
O'Connor.
O'Connor, here.
Gray, here. Valentine.
Here.
Okay. Did everybody get a chance to look at the meeting minutes from the June 9 public hearing?
Yes, sir.
Can I get a motion to approve?
Tidings, a motion to approve.
Kenauer, second.
Aiken.
Yes, sorry. Aye. Yes, sorry. I'm like not feeling good right now.
You want to take a minute?
No, I'm good.
We're trading cough drops.
Trading cough drops.
Yes. Burton.
Aye.
Kenauer.
Aye.
Tidings.
Tidings, aye.
Okay. Mr. Valentine, would you like to read the first tabled application?
So, first tabled application, 21P-0020, 1801 Fairport Nine Mile Point Road, better known as Pathstone Development within the MUD District. We have not received any additional materials from them. We're still awaiting a response from them based on the board's determination of what is residential or the non-residential uses. So, there's nothing additional for the board's discussion tonight, so I would recommend taking no action on this.
Okay.
Make a motion to table the application until those items are submitted.
Okay.
I'll second.
Aiken.
Aiken, aye.
Burton.
Burton, aye.
Kenauer.
Kenauer, aye.
Tidings.
Tidings, aye.
Okay, number two.
Item number two, 21P-0029, Fairport Nine Mile Point Road, the Arbers at Penn Field. So, subsequent to your last meeting, we have received updated responses, updated plans received on the 17th. Also in your drop, you did receive the SEER determination Doug had prepared, a draft neck deck for the board's review and consideration, as well as a draft approval resolution. So, those items were in there and would entertain the board's thoughts on those additional conditions, questions, concerns on that. I do have one item that I would like to discuss on that, but would open it up or look to the board for any additional input.
Okay, so, beginning with the SEER determination, it's come to our attention that there are some numerical errors in the final SEER document that need to be reviewed and corrected. So, we would ask staff to go through and double check.
I think we've pulled numbers from the original application, and as the plans have evolved through the project, I'm sure they've tweaked and we can confer with the applicant and make sure we've got those solidified and represented in the document.
That notwithstanding, the board is prepared to approve the SEER determination for that application pending the corrections and the resubmital to the board for its final review.
Okay. So, we can make those adjustments, and then we did also have a draft approval resolution, and don't know if the board had any comments on that. I know AJ's not here tonight. AJ being the lead on that application. Or, excuse me, sorry, Kenauer's the lead on the application, but AJ's being the chair.
The comment I'll make, I mean, the draft approval resolution that I saw, it's still kind of a work in progress a bit.
Yeah, we're filling in the findings, we're filling in that part of it. So, the rough template was there, standard conditions, tried to capture some of the items specific to the project itself, but then fleshing out the findings within that. The one item that I would put out there for the board's consideration is we are currently working with Barton Le Judas is our traffic consultant, the board's traffic consultant for these projects as well as for the town. We're looking at an overall corridor study. So, given the amount of traffic generated from these applications, these projects are looking at their impacts, they're working on their own mitigation, we're looking at the entire corridor, working with the state DOT. So, some consideration of the board of whether there's a placeholder in there, as we complete our application, should these developers help contribute to some of that overall traffic mitigation. Some are doing that already with their applications, but I think that would be a standard condition moving forward, that any new applicant that comes in understands from the beginning, once we get the whole plan in place, this is what needs to be done, not just your application, but we may need middle turn lanes down the road, we may need other impacts that each new developer pays some proportional share of that impact so that it helps to move that process along. So, that can be handled through a letter of credit item. I don't have an itemized amount and stuff tonight, but at least if the board deemed it viable, at least to kind of have a placeholder in there so that subsequent phases or other stuff, they understand that the town, working with the DOT, may look to have them provide some monetary contribution to those overall traffic improvements that will be needed.
So, that should probably be a standard condition, as best that you can word it, until we get the corridor study from BNL of all the mixed-use development applications.
Not picking out anyone specific, but as we move forward with all of them, I think that'll be a standard condition we have for all applications, that they help contribute and have a proportional share based on ITE traffic generation. So, depending on the size of your project, the size of your impact, then you would pay an impact fee or some contribution to that. And some are doing it through their applications and would get credit for doing those elements and look at, and we do something similar in Luamp, so that's down in our 250, 441 Lloyd's Corners area. The town enacted Luamp many years ago. That is traffic generated in impact fee, and if people put in rear access lanes or other things that help offset that, that offsets their costs. So, we do an assessment evaluation of what that impact is to that area. If they do improvements, they don't have to do anything additional. If they don't do any improvements, then they owe a fee into that fund. So, it's a similar element that we already have in place and would look to implement that along this corridor as well.
Is it reasonable to expect that you would have the BNL study in place and be able to estimate the financial impact of the recommended improvements in time to negotiate the letters of credit for the two applications currently up for approval?
Probably is not likely, just based on their traffic stuff that we've gotten. We've got BNL on contract now, we're working ahead with them. That's why I'm kind of putting it out there as a, maybe a future phase of, sorry to pick on the Arbers, a future phase of that or a future phase of some other developments, just trying to pull all that together. But, no, I don't have a cost tonight, I don't have the layout overall design of what that is, but just as we're getting into this and seeing more of them, just wanted to have that discussion with the board and kind of put that out there.
Okay. Mr. Kenauer?
Yeah, I have one comment. I know the applicant said they were going to capture the location in the documentation for charging stations on site, so I wanted to be sure that that was part of the package.
Okay.
And I think I would like to move to approve the SEER document tonight.
I'm not sure that we can do that.
Pending, unless you think we should wait for those corrections.
You know, between having AJ absent tonight and corrections that we know need to be made, I think it would be prudent to wait.
Okay.
But at least, I mean, you've got the SEER, you've got the draft approval, so if the board has any additional comments, we can work to tighten those up and then have all that ready to go and ready for your July meeting.
I think the SEER document is closer to being ready to go, aside from the changes that Mr. Burton mentions. The other, the draft approval, if you had comments about conditions or anything in the draft as it stands that you would want to share, that would be a good time to do that. And I would think that by the next meeting, that that whole thing could be approved formally.
Yeah, I would, for that document, want to wait until the next meeting because there is a lot of information that's not filled in on the draft document.
Yeah, and we'll continue to do that and continue to tighten that up. We are already incorporating the findings within that, that we'll capture that and have that well ahead of your next meeting for your consideration.
Okay.
And just for the record, we're talking about findings of fact, not conditions of approval.
Correct.
Okay, so, given that, I will move that we continue table this application.
I'll second.
Aiken.
Aiken, aye.
Burton.
Burton, aye.
Kenauer.
Kenauer, aye.
Tidings.
Tidings, aye.
Okay, number three.
Item number three, 22P-0003, 1820 and 1810 Fairport Nine Mile Point Road, known as the Penn Field Heights. Just as an update to the board, they did receive their zoning board variance of height approval. That was one of the outstanding items that they were waiting for. And then, subsequent to that, Doug did prepare a draft SEER for the board to consider. That was in your drop, as well as the draft approval resolution, as well for the board's consideration tonight.
So, have the other board members had an opportunity to go through the SEER determination?
I'm all set.
Good, okay. So, I'd like to take that to a vote to approve the final SEER determination. I need a second.
Me, I'll second.
Aiken.
Aiken, aye.
Burton.
Burton, aye.
Kenauer.
Kenauer, aye.
Tidings.
Tidings, aye.
And as far as the application, you have any update on the status on that?
Similarly, we did have a draft for the board on that. We are still working on the findings for that. I would also float out the same comment about the traffic mitigation piece, as well that the board would consider adding that as a condition into that. But I say we are still kind of pulling the findings together similarly as what we're doing with the Arbers, whether the board has any additional requirements or conditions you'd like to add.
The board members have anything that they think we should add to that list of conditions?
I don't think anything additional, but are we going to add this traffic?
Yes.
Now, for these projects?
Yes, that's going to be a loose condition, that Mark's going to draft some language that kind of ties it to a letter of credit that doesn't obligate the applicants to put a certain amount of money in the letter of credit, per se, but acknowledges that they may have some responsibility towards the contribution of the impact of the corridor from the mixed-use development.
I think it's a great idea. I mean, we've done it before in other parts of the towns.
Yeah, and I'll work with council to craft that language to make sure.
Again, the town can't absorb that by law, so.
Right, so, okay.
So.
My question, okay, I'm good.
So, I've gone through the conditions and met with staff about where we are, and I'm satisfied that the conditions are there, including the additional condition that we've been discussing here, adequately address the application and the information and testimony given. That draft approval resolution is in the same condition as the one for the Arbers, in that the findings of fact are mostly placeholders that need some numerical and directional or computational information to complete those findings. I would like to authorize the staff to proceed with the finalization of that approval resolution for the board's vote at our next hearing in July.
Okay, and if the board has any additional conditions or items, we can add those, and then obviously we'll update that, get those materials in and get that to the board for your consideration.
Do we need a vote on that, Pete?
I mean, to the extent that you continue table it pending the receipt of the, you know, that more formalized approval resolution.
So moved, I need a second.
I'll second.
Aiken.
Aiken, aye.
Burton.
Burton, aye.
Kenauer.
Kenauer, aye.
Tidings.
Tidings, aye.
Okay, number four.
Application number four, 22P-0012, 1838 Penn Field Road, the Verizon Wireless application. We did receive, just as of yesterday, and did put it in your drop just for your information, understand it was not received in time for your normal drop on Friday, but did provide it, they did provide a response to the Bergman review, so that's in there for your consideration at a future time. We also put in your drop the visual impact study, I believe that was in two weeks ago, as well as now we have the RF analysis information, so that's in there as well. Still waiting for the zoning board to make a determination. They tabled it at their last meeting, so I think at this point, kind of waiting for the zoning board to take that initial action on it, whether it's a viable use within the Four Corners District or not, whether they grant that special use permit. But did want to provide the board all the information and make sure you're up to speed and have the necessary information, so when you're ready and when the zoning board makes their determination, this board can act.
Okay.
Do you have anything else to add, Bob?
No, and I did see your comment that the ZBA is considering having a special work session to review that.
Yeah, and I don't know if they went ahead and scheduled that or not. I think they're waiting for some information as well. Pete, I don't know if you.
I don't have any additional information on that. I know they talked about it, but it's still a possibility, I believe, but I haven't heard any more.
Okay, okay, so it sounds like we'll wait, see the findings back from ZBA. So, at this point, I will move that we continue tabling this application.
Second.
Tidings, second.
Aiken.
Aiken, aye.
Burton.
Burton, aye.
Kenauer.
Kenauer, aye.
Tidings.
Tidings, aye.
So, Mr. Valentine, before you read number five, I will be recusing myself from this application, and then you can proceed.
Okay. So, application number five, 22P-0014, 1850 Empire Boulevard, McDonald's USA. So, subsequent to your last meeting, we did receive updated plans. Those were provided for the board's review. On that, it shows a turning template for the truck internally, how they would circumnavigate the site for deliveries. We do have some question for the board, and Mike's bringing it up now. One of our questions, and just want to make sure the board was comfortable, was on the, I guess it'd be the eastern end, but the lower side of your screen, they're showing some striping in there, in that area. Staff had raised the question as whether some of that could be considered green space. The turning template does show that a truck kind of goes through a portion of it. Mike's kind of highlighting that corner where it goes through there. If the board's comfortable with it, remaining striping, they do meet the green space. Doug went through the application, determined that they do meet that green space requirement, so that's not needed. But that was just one of the questions we came up with, so that was kind of my first question for the board, is whether you're comfortable with that. If you are, then we can.
You guys comfortable with that?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Okay, so we'll leave that striped. The other item of note that we had a concern about in the updated site plan was the green space areas, and Mike's pulling it up now, and then the lower end, they have hatched in, which is great. I'm glad they're adding and making some green space, but they did note that there were annual plantings in there. And we just had a little concern that after the first year and they're planted, who's going to go back and keep up with them, make sure that that's done, make sure it's continued? We'd recommend doing some sort of perennial or shrub, or I understand it's a drive-through, you don't want something too big, but I'm sure their landscape person can come up with some low-growing shrub or perennials that come up every year.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
We just have concern with annuals that after the first year, no one's going to replant them, and then it's just going to go back to just an empty space.
Yeah, I'm sure they won't have any issues with that. We're going to sign it back that I'm not.
That can just be a condition, and then we can handle that in pre-mile hours, that's a minor enough piece, but just wanted to get the board's take on that.
Yeah, I'm good with that. You guys are good with that, yeah. So, everything else is good, so we're ready to move on. We've got everything else in place, as far as I'm concerned with this application.
Okay, so, if you want to take action on the SEER portion first, yeah, so you've got to take action on the EAF.
Yep, I'll make the motion to approve the EAF for this application.
I'll second.
Aiken.
Aiken, aye.
Kenauer.
Kenauer, aye.
Tidings.
Tidings, aye. Then I'll make the motion to approve the application.
I'll second.
Second.
Aiken.
Aiken, aye.
Kenauer.
Kenauer, aye.
Tidings.
Tidings, aye.
Okay, and then we'll make note of those, and we'll handle that item in the pre-mile hour, and then continue on working with the applicant to wrap that up.
Okay, good. We'll get Mr. Burton back here.
Here he comes.
Item number six, 22P-0015, 2130 Fairport Nine Mile Point Road, known as the Chick-fil-A application. So, for this project, we're still awaiting quite a few things and just kind of wanted to run through those. So, from the applicant, we're still awaiting revised plans. We're still looking for PRC comment responses. We sent off the PRC comments, haven't gotten those back yet, waiting for them to provide revised plans. Excuse me. We're still waiting for their engineer's report, as well as the SWIP for the stormwater, and want to make sure the drainage is sized properly, the underground storage is there and everything else before we proceed too far ahead, if that needs to be expanded or changed. So, we need to see that. Based on your last meeting, we did send the architecturals off to both the landscape consultant. We did get comments back on that. We've sent it to the traffic consultant, so they're looking at that, and we'll have comments ahead of your next meeting for your consideration, as well as we also sent it to your architectural consultant. So, plant architecture and Chris Lopez are looking at them, and again, we'll get comments back ahead of your next meeting. So, hopefully, they'll submit the materials that they need to, staff can review those, look at the SWIP and the engineer's report, and then hopefully we'll get our comments back from our consultants and have that for the board's consideration as well.
So, I'd just like to note that we also asked them for a parking justification analysis, and I'm not sure how BNL adequately reviews the traffic impact statement without an understanding of whether or not we're reducing that large amount of surface slots. So, I mean, it's perfectly appropriate for them to review what's been received, but I think we should note, we're probably going to send it back to BNL again after we resolve how many parking spaces they really need and how many spaces this board is poised to accept.
Yep. Mike is, thankfully, thank you for highlighting. One of the items that we got into reviewer discussion, and Mike's bringing it up here, so on the site plan, and just want to put it out there for the board's thoughts, is there's an opening that kind of goes into that drive-through line, as you can see on the screen, from the parking lot, that kind of, we look at, that could possibly circumvent the circuitous path around the outside. And we just had a little concern in speaking with the traffic consultant and looking at it, does that open a potential where people are kind of zipping through that parking lot? You've got the public parking, people, we've got a crosswalk in the middle, the public's walking in to the building. It might be a better idea and check with the fire marshal, they didn't have any concern of closing that entrance off. Forcing people to go all the way around the outside extends additional queuing. If you happen to pull into the parking lot, you can still get back to that rear access. And then, part of the analysis from Mike's highlighting is removing that parking on the north end. Now, that road doesn't have to be a two-way road, there's a stop sign, they've got it two ways, and you've got cars coming in, cars coming out. Take that parking away, now it becomes a one-way. You've got cars, if you come off of 441, you're coming in from the top part, Mike's highlighting right in, cars come in from the bottom, and you'll kind of come to a one junction point. We'll have to look at putting some stop signs there, whether it's a two-way stop, so we each have to stop and then turn in, but that lengthens that queue, and then I think we'll get rid of some of the conflict points within that site and get rid of the option for people to cut through the parking lot and create some issues with pedestrians. So, that was one of the items that we did have some initial conversations about. See, Barton Le Judas is looking at it, and in this one, I would also encourage, similar to what we did in the mixed-use district, this project will generate a lot of traffic, and I think they should. They're already in Luamp, so that'll kind of be a belt and suspenders, but being in Luamp, we would charge them a traffic impact fee. They're making some adjustments, they're making some connections internally, but what does their traffic do to the overall corridor? And that fee could go into paying for improvements in other locations, adding center turn lanes, doing some other benefits to that corridor. But this one already falls in Luamp, so I don't know if that condition's as necessary, but similar to the previous conversations, that I think that'd be important.
Given that these are private roadways, and we've had difficulty with maintenance for many years, and Mike had some discussion with them about kind of what's going to take place now with the disposition of nap and trow, and not really sure what's going on, but I think that's a really important distinction. We need to have a maintenance agreement back there that's enforceable, because if they just do what they've been doing all these years and throw some new top on the road and walk away with the new amount of traffic back there, we're going to be in trouble.
And I don't think it was ever clear before, I think there was so many parties to it, that each person wasn't clear whose maintenance it was, but I think now that we've got one applicant for that parcel, I think that's important, and if this project moves ahead, that would be one of the conditions, to make sure we get that cleared up and be very definitive of who maintains it, what that maintenance means, who plows it, how does that work out?
Any other board members have any other comments about this application?
I just have a question. Do we ever come up with, get an answer on the parking?
No, no, they said that they would, they would get back to us on that.
Yeah, we've got concerns of how much parking they're looking to put in based on what they say they need versus what they're showing on the site.
And based on what the occupant load of the building is.
Right.
It's an excessive amount of parking for.
Is that all one parcel, or is that two different lots? Do they own that parking too, or are they going to lease that or rent it?
No, it's two different parcels, so the back portion, whether they're building that as part of their agreement or with the overall developer, I don't know, but it's a separate.
They suggested that they might be providing some additional surface parking lots for the property owner for some as-yet unidentified use, so, yeah, which makes this application that much more difficult to get our arms around until that's resolved.
Well, they could consider land banking or not building them at this time, and then if and when the next application comes in and there's a demand, a need for it, then maybe install them at that time.
Then that's one thing, yep, absolutely.
But.
And that would help with snow storage, and it would certainly help with really evaluating the TIS and getting our arms around the.
Yeah, I mean, right now, I guess you're looking at worst-case scenario with all that parking, it would be less, but they're also looking at a greater impact and a greater impact fee, given how much parking they're looking to put in.
With all that parking, although the Chick-fil-A won't be using it, if it was all utilized, does the retention and water quality addressed properly for that many spots?
At this point, we don't know.
We don't.
That's where we're waiting for the SWIP report and engineer's reports, that's why.
Yeah, okay.
Not recommend the board take any action on this, because the pond may need to be twice the size that it is based on the parking lot, but without the calks and without the supporting documentation, it's hard to say, let's move ahead. I mean, they're proposing underground storage, so they could theoretically make the underground storage larger if it didn't meet that, but right now, it's hard to know and finalize a site plan without having all the pieces to the puzzle.
Right, and I mean, if they're going in that way, we would have to be sure that the storage and water quality was addressed to support that many spots.
Definitely.
Okay.
So, a lot of questions still on this one, obviously, just had the public key. hearings, we're, you know, getting into it, but hopefully by your next meeting, we'll have responses back from them, the parking justification, the SWIP report, the engineer's report, as well as feedback from, you know, your consultants as well to, you know, give you all the information that you need.
Do you have anything else?
Didn't you also have a question on the amount of the people going through the drive, you know, the drive-through corral there, service, how long it takes for a person from once they start to?
You know, it's not really germane, germane to the factors for consideration per se. But the reason that I ask is because, you know, we do, we work with other fast food establishments, and the industry keeps tabs on how long it takes from somebody, when somebody hits the tripwire and places the order, verbally places the order, and picks up their order and leaves. And they track that, how many minutes and seconds. And there's an industry target that they try to get to a certain number, and that's considered good business model. So if they can do that, they're moving enough people and moving enough food and their pro forma works. And so, you know, I think there's a correlation between how, how quick, especially on twin lanes, how quick they're trying to push people through and, you know, things like the delivery, the guy, the little Pac-Man guy that's running out the side door to deliver to the second entrance and back and forth, so.
It's more like Frogger.
So, you know, that's why I asked the question. I'd be interested in seeing what they, how they respond to that, but, so.
Anything else the board needs or information you're looking for? I mean, obviously you had questions the last meeting, we'll look for, you know, responses to those, but is there anything additional you guys need ahead of the next, for your consideration?
You know, I, I think we, I think we did enough of a review of the preliminary information to ask enough questions. I suspect that when we get the responses back from the applicant, we'll have some more, we'll have some more questions.
Okay. Just want to make sure if there's anybody else that we're looking for, any other?
Not at this time, Mark.
Hit all our consultants and got all that stuff out, so at least we're, be ready with that hopefully at the next meeting.
Yeah, BNL's going to be the key on this one, I think.
And as you said, you know, if they're changing the parking configuration and the lot and the number, that may be a few iterations. They're going to come back and look at the overall, you know, traffic study, look at the access points. One of the items that was not included in the traffic consultant's report, and I think it should be reflected, is the connection that they have to a traffic light at the, at the south end. Now that Burger King has gone in and they've made that connection to their parcel, and I didn't see a reflection where they noted that if somebody wanted to make a left on 250, you could leave their property, go down, and it's not showing on the Google Maps, but you can, it's showing where the cornerstone Perkins is. You can now take an access drive behind Burger King, get into the plaza behind Mo's, Panera, and then exit at a traffic light. So I think that ought to be considered as well, getting people in and out. Anytime you can exit somebody to a traffic light, you definitely have a safe left. And I know that's going to be some of the concern is coming out, making a left on 250 and more so going out and try to make a left onto 441 at the, at the northern exit. But if you can, and they can do some internal signage to get people down to the traffic light and then exit them out there, then you've got a much safer route.
Yeah. It's interesting that you bring that up because when the application came in and I went back there and drove that, I put that in my notes and I failed to ask them two weeks ago. But if, if that becomes part of their plan for egress from the site, there's a number of traffic calming measures that would need to be implemented back there because that, that area back there is really not designed to take flow from the north.
Yeah, it was, it was a requirement of the, actually as a town board application. So in fulfilling Lew Amp, the Burger King was a town board application because it originally came in as incentive zoning. Falls under the planning board's district that you would normally look at, but since it was incentive zoning, went to the town board, they just required the connection. But to your point, yeah, we should look at, you know, whether speed humps or, you know, some other traffic calming goes into it, but should look at, and I think they should probably update their, their traffic analysis to show that it has a viable potential connection. And then even going north, you know, do they need to have, you know, speed humps or other, you know, traffic calming measures as they, you know, exit towards 441 as well?
So if you think it's appropriate, maybe you can ask Terry to, to take a look at that as part of their current evaluation.
Because there is that doodle bug there too, which is concerning if there's, if there needs to be some type of traffic calming measure in that area.
It's good that it's all interconnected, but you just need to make sure.
It's the other building that's further north that has, I think there's some outpatient.
Yes. There's like an orthodontist.
Yeah, orthodontist or dentist or something in that building. And then Burger King has a future building lot allocated in the back that has yet to be built. So there's another building that's going to come at some point. Mike's highlighting where that is right now.
Okay. So I move to table this application pending the information that remains outstanding.
Tidings, second.
Aiken?
Aiken, aye.
Burton?
Burton, aye.
Kenauer?
Kenauer, aye.
Tidings?
Tidings, aye.
So do we have any other business to attend to this evening?
We do not have any action items and we don't have any held items for the boards.
Okay. And with that, I'll declare this hearing closed.